You've got mail. Welcome everyone to our August meeting. Please join with me in reciting the flag of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your minutes in front of you there, please take a moment to review those and we'll take action.
So I think it's on the three of them that DJ submitted for Scott tonight.
No.
This is DJ Benomo, he has worked with Scott's office, he's complained to the attorney previously. Scott had me and Dana for a vote on some finding things for their water project, so he sent DJ stuff.
Okay.
It's been a long time, hasn't it?
Hey, this is, I guess this next moratorium is supposed to end on Friday. So DJ is offering some guidance on different things.
Is everyone removed minutes? Your pleasure. Huh?
Yeah, they will shake their head yes.
Couple typos.
Typos?
Might be a couple typos in there.
That's all I can.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm making motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 14th.
For a second?
I'll second it.
They moved a second to approve the minutes from the last meeting, is anything under question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I better not go anywhere near. Pose same time? Motion carried. Go around the meeting, public comments. Uh, start back there with Nikki. Nikki?
I have an issue, do you want that?
Well, this is public comment time, so...
Okay. My water bill spiked. And in January, just to give you an update, in January I used 469. In February it was 455.
Hey Jake, hold on, that, you need to add a zero to that consumption. It's, it's, you said 469, it's 4,690.
Do you want to do it, I mean?
No, I mean you can go ahead, I just want, the numbers are a little different when you add that zero, so...
Okay. 4,690, is that right?
Right.
Okay, in February it was 4,550. In March it was 3,530. April it went down to 2,780. In May it was 3,390. In June it was 3,012. Okay, then in July it went 1307, what's that, 13,000?
That's 13,000 gallons.
13,007 gallons, and my bill was $165. And then for this month, the bill I got, it was for 8,320 gallons. And my bill was $120. And when I had a garden, when I had a pool, I never even had, I've never had a water bill like that. I don't know what happened, Tony came out three days and red and it wasn't spinning. I had nothing in the house going on, yes, I checked the blather in the toilet, I checked everything. I had no leaks, went under the house, I can't explain. All I'm asking is if the board will adjust those two months, and that would turn it around.
I gave her a printout for her consumption, I guess, Nikki, I knew the bill was high, and I do pay attention to everyone's bills, I kind of know. And I sent Tony over there to read it, and he checked it, it wasn't spinning, so I went ahead and sent it. Summer usage is up, people are using a lot more water. Um, he checked it multiple times, I don't think it's been spinning any time that you've checked it. I, I don't have an explanation for why Vicki's bill jumped. That is what we need to read, we checked the reads on it. I, I don't know, but I can't adjust a bill just because, um, just because. So, I told her that she needed to come to the board and she needed to talk to you guys about it and see what she thought, so, I don't know. We can't explain it.
Okay, well, I'll go on that first, tell her new business. Tony? Mary Jill?
Okay, um, I guess I have an issue as far as the property out there goes, so, I guess I need to explain it and then, like, fall on mercy of the court or something, I don't know. Joey was cleaning it up and he got incarcerated. And in the meantime, while he was in jail, I went to the hospital and spent a week. And his wife was trying to clean it up best she could, but she's not very good at stuff like that. And Joey went, had already planned, he's got people that want to buy some of the stuff that's in the backyard. He's gone in and he's cut down the weeds in the back. Yes, there's still stuff that has to do, he has to do, but he has to pick through it and say, this is junk and this is for sale, or whatever, or with the people that want the stuff. And all that we're doing is we're asking, you know, for some time to get it done, because it don't, I mean, it's not bad, but I'm not over here anymore, I'm over in Los Cerritos, and I don't have a car right now. So it's hard for me to get over here unless Shannon comes and gets me and I can help. But I'm not lot, lot of help because I've got, I got a heart problem going on, I've got Parkinson's disease, which makes me shake. And so anyways, Joey's trying to do it by himself, he can't, he's got two boys that just had new babies. They will, Dad, you know, I've got life of my own. And, uh, I noticed as I was coming through town, there's other places, you know, that are bad too. Don't know if they've gotten any ladders or anything, but, I said, we're, all we're doing is asking, you know, to get it cleaned up and everything. They're not living here anymore, he's got a tent sitting out there that he's put up while he's cleaning, but he don't live here. They lived over in Falmouth with Shannon's mom. Now then, they're, they're moving to Sealyville, so, so a trip back and forth, he can't work, he didn't have a dog yet, since he just died on sale and stuff. So it's a long trip back and forth, you know, between Sealyville and, and here, so that he can do it. So he had to, had to put the parts up there so that, you know, that they could, could work back there. I went back there and looked a lot of over, because I hadn't been over for a while. And it's looking pretty good, but it's like I said, some of the stuff in there, I've got to junk out. Some of the stuff he's got to junk out, some people like that didn't want to buy it. So if you guys will give us more time, you know, to, to work on it. He said, "I won't take him home, he gets in there and throws it out," he's like, he's already got people that wants to buy some stuff back there. And, uh, I don't know what else to say, I mean, outside of the fact that, uh, if the price was right, we'd sell it and get out of here there.
Joe? Got something to add?
I just, I've been trying to clean it up. Um, okay. I got, I'm going out of the house again for much, oh yeah, three days to get out. I had to go lurking over on the other property, it got cluttered up. Had to clean other things and stuff, but I just, I don't have a license and stuff to get back and forth. My wife drives me, sometimes she can't drive me over here. You know, I mean, I understand you guys may look all like junk, but it's not. And if there's others, if there's other places here in town that are just as bad as mine or whatever, and I'll clear them and get fixed that way. That's all I have to say.
Kevin? Clyde? Okay, well, discuss that under new business again, okay. Anybody have anything under old business? I wasn't here last time, guys, so you have to.
Um, I will say that Community Crossings has been closed out completely, and, um, I did return the state's portion, since we were under, since we spent less. We returned about $8,700 to the state, so we did save a little bit, but that's all finished.
And there will not be any this second time this year, right?
We did not, no, the program is currently on pause, so they stopped applications in July. And we, they're supposed to bring it back hopefully the first of the year, we'll just have to see what happens. So, we did not apply, so, yeah.
Other old business?
Um, I will also say the water rate increase, I, the software is ready to go. Keystone got that to me a few days ago, so I have to install and do a test in a Zelda. So that will be the September bill, likely covered out.
Other old bit, other old business?
Um, we consider phosphate real business.
Yeah, we've been discussing for a long time.
Okay, um, as far as the phosphate addition to the water system goes, the agreement was submitted to HWC. And I had already emailed all of the paperwork that Water Solutions done, that they had done on that. And I believe last, last Friday, does that sound right, Tony? I believe last Friday, Gary Knuckles and his wife met with HWC at the water building to go over the setup over there and to get a little drawing, a little sketch. And HWC's moving forward with getting that in motion.
Okay, sounds good.
Tony, did you look at that fire hydrant in front of the post office? Can we turn it?
Fire hydrant's lit.
Okay. Okay. Somebody ran into it again, so he was going to go look at it, see if we could turn it, get that nozzle out of the street, that they won't even come on.
I know the problem, my wife is one of them.
Yes.
I was unaware of that, but, man.
She did. There's only $3,000 worth of damage to, to all of that car.
Ooh. Alright.
What do you have in mind? Other old business?
Don't believe we got back to the family and found the ones down the privacy fence? So if there's anyone that wants to weigh in on that?
I, I was always told that three foot back from the property line.
Well, I think they have it marked, and I don't think they're going three foot back. So, does the property line start at the sidewalk? I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter to me where they put the fence, so... Tony, it's, it's right on the, do you think it's supposed to be?
It's about down the hallway, where they have the most marked sidewalk here.
I don't know what's, if there's any code in Indiana for that or not.
I've never seen one.
They're already processing it.
Well, I guess they know where they want to put it.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of viewpoint probably at this point, so...
It's not going to block an intersection or anything, right?
No, no.
You don't like?
No, I don't think so.
So what are you doing it?
Yeah.
No, it's strictly traffic view, I guess, it really wouldn't matter at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can have a deed?
Oh, yeah. Uh, we have got the deed for the property at 330 North Deep Pole Street. We need to discuss on how we would like to dispose of it now.
Um...
Ideas?
We talked about offering it to the two neighbors. Giving them a crack at it, because they're really the ones who want it. That's all we talked about last meeting.
So they're going to fight over it?
Well, be a close deal. Be a close deal.
Oh, good.
Hey DJ, do you know anything about disposing a tax sale property?
Uh, I know that there's a way in the code that you can sell it to the adjoining landowners by giving them these notice and allowing them to bid on it, I think that was Scott's plan.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, yeah.
But you do have the deed back, because I, I know I had talked to them a week or so ago about that deed, uh, because the order, it finally come through, so you do have a recorded deed?
Yes, I recorded it today.
Oh, okay, okay, we won't be looking for it then?
Yeah, no, I recorded it today, they called me last week and told me to come take it up, then she called me back, and I, I took care of all that today, so we do have it.
And I mentioned having a reserve of exactly what we spent, at least. Whether it was recording fees or, you know, whatever, we had to pay into it, so we'd get our money back at least.
So, Scott had title work done, and we had some certified mailing costs, some advertising costs. So Scott was going to have his office total it up what he had spent. I spent $35 today to record the deed. So, once we get that number, it, I, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, DJ, this is DJ Benomo, by the way, he works with Scott, Scott's associate, he's subbing in tonight. Um, Scott said that we would just like do a, we can just do a sealed bid.
Right.
And then, we just do a minimum.
Right.
Or to recoup our costs.
You can stay at minimum. Uh, you can qualify, I think Scott said, uh, I'm not familiar with the property, but evidently there's a house on the property that weren't torn down.
Yes.
That can all be, uh, a requirement in the bid. And they can choose whether or not they want to, to do that. And go from there, and if, if the adjoining properties or, or owners are not interested, then you can go, you know, you could go townwide at that point and see. Yeah, so you can, you can really have specifications on what, what you want them to do in terms of cleanup on the property. And I think that's what Scott's plan was.
Well, thanks, people.
I thought that's pretty much what we discussed before last meeting, which I know you want to hear, Jonathan.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that is pretty much what we discussed. I, what we didn't discuss is how long we should do a period to accept bids. What I'll do is, if that's what we want to do, is I'll have Scott write up the letter, and then send it to the adjoining owners, which there's... So if you go one, two, and then behind, because behind would be adjoining as well, so there's at least three. So, um, so we hit those three, and then we just, how long do you want to give them to bid? How long do you want to give them to demolish the structure after closing? Because, because I, I'm under the understanding we can state all of that in there, correct?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yes, okay. So you could say 30 days, 60 days, you know?
Do you want to transfer property until it's torn down?
Um, I don't know, what's the question for DJ, I don't know. Uh, would we transfer the property prior to turn, to them tearing it down, or would we transfer it after they tear it down?
I would transfer it after they tore it down.
Okay.
I would transfer it after they tore it down, which means, yes, you would have to maintain insurance on it. Uh, some type of law, because somebody's going to be coming on the property to tear it down. But I would transfer it until after it's torn down. Because then you get the scenario, if they don't do it, it's no longer yours. So I think you have to deal with getting it, somehow getting it back. Some people can be cooperative, some can't, so I would wait until that was done.
So how would the money work on that?
How would the money work, well, depending on, you got, I guess you have some options. You could just have them bid an amount, knowing that they have to tear it down, so they can take that into account in their bid. Or you can set a price yourself, taking that into account.
No, I meant, I wasn't...
Oh, the, the, the cost of tearing it down?
No, I wasn't sure, how, would they pay for it and tear it down, would we not give money until the final thing?
If, if there was going to be money exchanged, I would say that they would not give you the money until it was torn down. Until it was torn down. I'd have that part of the, of the agreement complete beforehand. But if you did have, you know, if, if one of the adjoining property owners did want it, and they, they agreed to tear it down, and they agreed to pay an amount, Scott would write some type of an agreement up with that adjoining property owner, and they go from there. But the last thing would be the exchange of the money.
You need a motion to...
What? I don't know, I should have... I think we've got to have a minimum of what we paid out, at least, that's got to be the minimum.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be opposed to 90 days to get that thing out of there. Just because they're going to have to coordinate everything with utilities and everybody, and it may take them a bit to get the stuff done.
You'll have to line somebody up to do that. So, you know, we need a time frame of, of seconds?
Yeah, I think we need a time frame of how long it'll accept bids too.
Well, why don't we let Natalie and, no, she knows what it is, get in contact with Scott, get all that written up, and then we can approve, approve that at the next meeting. That'd be fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't think any longer than 30 days for a bid, right? Or two weeks?
Most people know, have known that for a while.
Then there's...
I said I wouldn't think...
Are you going to advertise that, or just?
Knock on the door and say, "Look, you've got this option." I think most of them already know though, don't they?
Yeah, there's, there's two that have expressed an interest, and then the third is kind of doing it with the one, so...
Okay, well, we all kind of agree on 30 days to get their bid in, 90 days to get it torn down after they take...
After the bid's accepted?
Yep. And then the reserve of the amount of money that we spent so far.
Okay. Just to recoup what we spent.
Yes, ma'am.
Other old business?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's go to new business then, we'll talk about Vicki's water bill.
Natalie, did you check, um...
Let's speak up, Carol.
Oh. Natalie, did you check to see what her usage was prior summer months?
I did not pull her summer month, I can, if we want to see it, I can pull it.
To see if maybe, um...
Yeah. I mean, a lot of people, yeah, a lot of people have been like, "Oh my gosh, my, my summer months are cra-" "My bill's high, I feel like my bill's high." The kids have been home since March.
Yeah.
And everybody's been home a lot more with the shelter in place, so water usage is definitely up. Um, I don't have an explanation for Vicki's bill being that high, I can pull her summer usage. Tony and I checked it, it didn't flag on the leak report or anything like that, so, I just, it's a mystery to me, honestly, I don't know.
Nobody's been coming over there and getting water off of you, have they?
If they did, they would look terrible, because the rose bush would eat them alive. But no, and just to be honest, what I used last year, they can, I mean, they can check all they want. I never had a bill like this ever, not with a pool, not with a garden, I haven't had a garden for three years. And we always use Sarah's hose, because mine wouldn't reach, and hers would. Well, if we're going to do an adjustment, it would be to be pretty similar to that month's bill.
Something to base the adjustment off of. If you spiked last year, or didn't spike last year, we'll at least be able to see it and know what it should have been, if nothing else.
Well, I understand.
Last summer Vicki's consumption for the same periods of time, um, her July bill last year was 5,670 gallons, and her August bill was 4,790 gallons. So, these are some really large numbers in comparison to that. I just, I don't, I don't know. That's like January of 19, all the way down.
What's the S behind that mean?
That means that our sprinkler permit kicked in.
Oh. Well, that only, somebody applies to the sewer, isn't it, huh?
Yes. And her, this summer usage is on the back of that, it did a two-sided print on it.
Oh. Tricky.
I don't know why it did that. Yeah, I don't know why it did that, but... It did a jump, I mean, once you add that zero to it, it's really high.
Well, I heard what she said, so...
Tony, did you and Matt look at that meter?
We didn't look at it. We talked about meters in general, because I'm always looking at the apartments over there.
Mm-hmm.
And he said that they either work or they don't work, and he said they're guaranteed up to two point five, I think, million gallons, to be accurate, within a smidge.
Takes a long time to get ten million gallons.
Yes.
Got four thousand or so gallons a month. Did Matt come in?
Yeah, I called Matt because you were, there was a couple others that didn't flag on the leak report, and we had them check.
The apartments used, um, the apartments by the post office, used seventy thousand gallons last month. And never flagged as a leak. That's a tremendous amount of water. And, um, we also had that problem at Linda's house, while no one was living there. We had, I, I can't remember the number. It was ridiculous. Also didn't flag as a leak. So Tony and I thought it was prudent to bring Matt in and have some meter discussion, so...
What do you think, Board?
I'll make the motion to give her a one-time, um, write-off, whatever.
To the average?
To the average, yeah.
Like one bill? Cut it off one bill or both bills?
Well, it spiked on both.
Yeah, it did spike on both, so...
I'd do both the bills on the average.
Okay.
I'll second that. Thank you.
It hasn't passed yet, Vicky.
I was going to say, you know, hold on.
Don't cut your chickens, Vicky.
Oh, my gosh, I know. I didn't get the vote.
Who's second there?
Becky.
Becky. Been moved and seconded to give, uh, the property of Vicky adjustment on two months' spike to a bill of average usage. Question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose. Motion carried. Now you can say thank you.
Thank you, and I knew you were going to say that.
So that'll be a credit, Vicky, since you've already paid these bills. So it'll be on your next bill. You'll get a credit.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's fine. Thank you all.
Oh, okay, now moving to the cleanup of Steven's property. What kind of, uh, extension you want? We've been dealing with this for about six or seven years.
I know.
How much more extension you want?
Well, now then, nobody's actually living around over here. Uh, Joey's in and out like every day or every other day. We, uh, we still have our dog over there, I guess, that's so that everybody knows that somebody's still on the property, so they don't go in, but, um, and he's over here taking care of him all the time. Hopefully, you know that I'm better now, and, uh, a little bit better anyway, and I'm trying to get his boys over here to help clean. Should give us thirty days. And that way, we'll make sure everything's out of there. I have to find a place, I want to get the semi-trailer out of there, too, so I don't know where I'm going to put it.
For my concern, semi-trailer can stay there.
Yeah, I mean, the semi-trailer can probably...
It's, it's got to move.
Like Joey said, but...
Eighty-two, eighty-two and a half feet is the middle of the semi-trailer. Half that trailer's on my property. It's got to go.
Eighty-two and a half feet, what the properties are?
Yeah, it is. I've got the plat. I've measured off Bill's certified legally-bound, uh, survey that he had done. He's got his stake in the ground still.
I was going to say, always before they set us...
Both blocks are supposed to be the same length.
They are, and the middle of that length is right in the middle of that semi-trailer.
Dot I've seen...
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll take Clyde and him down there with me. We'll pull the plat out.
You got spray paint dollars coming out of the road.
No, I didn't do anything. I got a stake in the mi- I got a stake in Bill's property that they certified for his survey through the courts, and that's what I'm going to go off of, because that's, that's going to be his boundary. That'll be the same boundary we have. Measured off of it, eighty-two and a half feet, like I'm supposed to, half that distance. It's right in the middle of that semi-trailer.
Well, I mean, that's one of the things...
But you wanted to get it out there anyway, so I'm just letting you know, it does have to go.
Yeah, I mean, um, we have, you know, a trailer and a, and a, uh, not a trailer, campers thing, and an antique car that's sitting back there that we, we've got to do, so I mean, if we move that, even if we move the semi-trailer over or whatever, if we've only got a couple of things out there, but that's like I said, I mean, without us being over here, you know, we can find somebody to buy it. We'll sell it.
This letter that we're sent to you about the violation said that, uh, in order to appeal it, you're supposed to do it within ten days.
He got it when he was in jail, so I...
It doesn't matter when he got it. He had ten days from the time you received it to appeal it.
It wasn't even certified.
Certified by what?
Notary or anything.
Why, why does it have to be certified by a notary?
For, I mean, for you guys to say you come on my property to do anything, I mean, that's trespassing.
Oh, you think so?
It's posted.
It's posted?
Yes.
Well, that and ten cents will buy you a cup of coffee at an old place.
If I went to go on somebody else's property, I'm trespassing.
But the town has jurisdiction over, uh, nuisance properties. It's a nuisance, Joe. It's been that way for over six years. You've had plenty of time to clean this place up. What is the problem? How much of cleaning up have you done since, uh, you put your lien to up?
Hey, I'll read up the debt first, stay there till I can clean the property. I feel like I'm living there, so don't get loud with me, please.
Well, it's been six years. Six years, at least. We've had three directives from the court, from the judge. And you guys have ignored it.
Actually, I feel like you all are picking on me, because there's other properties here in town.
We're talking about your property right now, not anyplace else.
Yeah, that's the problem.
No, it's not a problem. We get you cleaned up, we'll see what happens to the rest of them.
My stuff is inside of a privacy fence. Yes, it has, don't have the divider on it yet. The divider's gone.
What do you mean, yet?
Well, I plan on putting a fence up.
For what?
To divide my property from Nikki's and their property.
You don't even know where the center of the property is, according to what John says.
Well, that's why I plan on going to the plat office.
When? When you going to do that? In this thirty days that you want next, uh, extension? You don't drive. How you going to do it?
Well, I'll have to figure something way out.
You've got a lot of excuses. You've had a lot of excuses for six, better than six years.
You guys left me alone last year when you guys thought it was going to be, you thought it was going to be sold. Didn't say nothing to me.
You were still under order from the court before that. We've been more than lenient with you. More than lenient. Now, I'm going to ask the board if they want to give you an extension.
Well, I would, I'd agree with you.
And if they don't give you an extension, we are coming in and cleaning it up and filling that dumpster up. It's up to these people here.
The stuff that you guys think are trash, that's worth a lot more than what you think it is.
Why didn't you sell it before now? If it's available, why haven't you sold it already?
Well, because I figured I'd have a job and stuff, you know, I keep on running into problems.
Yeah, and you create almost all the problems for yourself.
No, I don't.
Well, I think you do.
That's your thoughts.
That's my thought. That's, everybody's got a thought.
Yeah.
See, too, and I, you know, I, it's, it's not a, I guess it's an excuse, but it's not... Joey, of course, had, is, is bipolar, and he has, you know, some issues. Well, he wants to hang on to everything that was his debt.
I get that. I get that. But some things aren't possible.
Right, and when, when the other guy come in, the first, the first guy when he bought, bought the property, and he went and had it measured and everything, we was kind of like going by that, but then when Vicky's husband come and told us, you know, that, uh, he was, he bought it, he told me and Joey standing right out on the street that we didn't have to worry about anything as long as he owned it, because he was, he wasn't really going to do anything with the property. And if I wanted some stuff that was still out there, I had no problem. Well, things have changed on that one, too, but anyway, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just pleading for the extra extension, and after that, we'll ask for no more. It'll be gone. It'll be over with. Won't have to worry about it. Won't have, you guys don't have to pay anybody to come in and do it. It'll be done. I'll snatch my grandsons up by the ears and tell them to get over there and help their dad, and it'll be over with.
Why haven't you done that before now?
Well, not my kids, but, uh, I can, I can put my boot up to the butt.
So you're wanting to put a fence up in there now?
No, we're, we're wanting an extension to get it cleaned up and get everything out of there, and then see what happens after that. I mean, it's, it's still our property after that, but we want to know everything's cleaned up, and if we can find somebody that, at the right price that wants to buy it, fine. If they don't, it's still ours. But we won't, we won't go through the trash thing anymore, because, believe me, I've bitched about that enough myself, so...
So are you thinking, or is Joe thinking that he can put a fence up, and as long as nobody sees that stuff from the road, he can still keep it back there?
No, that's the way, that was his thought before.
Not all of it. I mean, just some things. I plan on getting rid of what scrap metal, I mean, what wood I have laid out there, you guys mentioned in the letter or wherever. Some, it's just to build a fence. You have to put some of that in, so there won't be seen, period.
Not the problem of being seen totally. It's a nuisance because of vermin and insects. You let the weeds grow up, you let the trash pile up, it's a haven for vermin. So it's not totally the vision side of it.
Well, I feel like this is just all about me and ain't nobody else in town.
Hey, we're not going there, Joe. Joe, we're talking about you now.
Yeah, I think...
We'll address, we'll address other people. It has nothing to do with other people. It's you. It's six years.
See, that's part of his bipolar stuff, that he, he gets them anxiety. He takes medication for it, and he sees a shrink. Um, I mean, you know, sometimes I think, you know, that there's more that I could do, but I don't know what it would be, so I, I just stand by him, you know?
We've got that dumpster down there for you and for us. We've only got it for two weeks. Any cost that we assume cleaning up that property will be filed as a lien against the taxes. So the longer you wait, the long, the more it's going to end up costing.
Okay, so what you're saying is that you're going to give us the two weeks?
I didn't say that.
No, I mean, that was kind of like...
I'm just saying how long we've got the dumpster rented for.
Right.
Any costs and labor also incurred by the town.
Right, any, any cost the town has will be part of that lien against the property, the tax, the taxes on the property. So the dumpster would be part of that. Any hourly wage or anything that we would have for people to do it would be part of it. It's just finally come to a head. It's been a long time, a long time coming. And you driving by my house throwing me the finger does not help things. That does not help a bit. What do you think, Board?
I say no extension.
Carol, what do you say?
No, extension.
Becky? Becky?
It's been six years.
Well, at least six years. So there, yes or no?
I don't know if we have any kind of a guarantee that it could be done in two weeks.
Or thirty days.
So is that a no?
I guess.
Well, how, I mean, how are you going to...
I say no, too.
I like my, you're determined to not jump.
It's all nuisance. We're not determining anything.
Yeah, you don't have to make that determination, but if there's anything on the property, I mean, it is still their property while it's being cleaned up. If there's anything you want to come and get off of the property and take...
You better start doing it soon.
You can do that.
Okay, are you going to let us go in there and clean?
You can clean whatever you want. We're going to come in there and clean, too.
Okay, so when are you supposed to start?
My suggestion to you is, put a tag on what you want to keep. We won't take that out of there while we have the dumpster there. So that means you got... Hold on, twelve days? Twelve days to do that. Meantime, anything that's junk is coming out of there.
Okay, do you have somebody that's already going to go in there and start working?
Yeah, I've got two town employees. They have an excavator with a claw on it. They just come in and grab a hold of it, take it over and put it in the dumpster.
What if we tag everything? I mean...
No, they can't tag everything.
I know, that's why I'm asking that question over this direction.
Yeah, I mean, really, you don't have to. There's nothing that says you have to follow this tag idea.
Okay.
Um, that's entirely up to your discretion.
I know you have sentimental value for that car, right? And I don't know if there's anything else that's sentimental, but you can't have everything being sentimental in there.
Well, no, a lot of it's not sentimental. A lot of it is just that we know that we've got somebody that wants to buy it.
Then they better get their butts over here and get it, then. Because if in two, in two weeks, that dumpster's leaving. If we're not completely satisfied, we'll get another one. That's it. We're moving on. Other new business?
Um, I have some new business.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh...
Was that a threat, Joe?
No, I didn't say nothing. I just...
Didn't say nothing, huh?
Um, okay, so I brought, I, actually...
I'll be bringing the clothing hood down here.
That's the thing that worried my life.
I know. I know.
So bring them on.
Okay, so there is PIRVAC relief money, which Scott and I talked about following the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I had John come to the office and enter us into the, um, it's the coronavirus relief fund acceptance certification. So John came in and signed this and notarized this, and I submitted this to the state to put us in... it's the coronavirus relief fund acceptance certification. So John came in and signed this and notarized this, and I submitted this to the state to put us in.
Oh yeah, you owe me two bucks for that notarizing.
I know, I got your receipt. He doesn't charge me to notarize.
Well, she did me.
I'm shocked she did that. Anyway, um, so the town of Rosedale in this saloma is entitled to twenty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Okay, I looked at that number, that's our number. I looked at that number and I was like, what would I possibly buy with that money? I don't know what goes to, to relief. So Scott, me and Scott, sent me back an email and said, okay Natalie, um, you need some air conditioning. He said, you need some air cleaning, you need some filtration, you need some purification. He said, that's completely justifiable. He said, your window units in here are spitting out dirt, they're loud, they're old. It's, he, he's, yeah. And I've never, ever in a million years would have thought about that. So I appreciate his thoughts on that. So I had, um, I called Andrews and had them come out and give us a quote. Um, because Andrews put in the furnace at the police station. Did you guys get a new one or the garage?
The garage.
The garage got a new one. And they did a nice job and, um, they're really honest. So I, they're the only ones I've had come out. We can get another quote, whatever. But Doug was here yesterday, um, and he went through and of course we have a furnace up here and we have a furnace back there. Um, he was shocked that we had two furnaces for these spaces. He says that the furnace on my side is extremely large for that. He says, he starts asking me all these questions. He's worried that it's leaking CO2. I don't have a carbon monoxide detector over there. He says, because of the size of it and it getting so hot and the heat exchanger expanding and contracting, he was worried it's cracked. Nonetheless, he suggests that we replace that with a more efficient, smaller furnace and air conditioning unit. And that in the grant part of this, that we add the eye wave. I don't know. There's some kind of an add-on and they're air purifiers and they're, they kill the viruses and stuff like that as your air goes through there. So.
Mold?
And the mold. And we discussed the mold and we looked at the mold. We know we have the mold issue over here as well. That is a health issue. He says that, I mean, he had a, he was having a freakout over there. So, um, this is the first quote that he gave me on that side in the front, cause he says that he will not add an air conditioner to that furnace as is. He says he will not do it. He says it's dangerous. So that was six thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And that includes the air purifier. To add an air conditioner out here is five thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and it also adds the air purifier. He also gave us a quote that if we wanted to upgrade this furnace out here at the same time, it was an extra one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. He says the systems are old. He says that it's all just kind of a hot mess, which I think we all knew that with this building. If you guys want me to get another quote, I can, if we wanna talk about it a little bit more. Um, I think that Scott got the idea because when he was here last month, these were on and they were off and then it was loud and you could just see the dust flying out of them and all that. So that's, that's one component of this grant. The second component of this grant is Scott feels I needed to get myself a laptop and have Keystone software loaded onto it. Um, so I could work from home in the event that we have to close down, in the event that, you know, our kids get sent home from school after one and a half days at school, like they did today. Um, and so I talked to Keystone about a laptop and they said that they would make that my primary computer and I'm sure that John can help me transfer data to that. So that's another use for that money. We can also get, we can also buy a bunch of PPE for ourselves. We can buy some for the fire department. We can just kinda buy some and have it on hand. So I can also do some shopping with that. This is a reimbursable grant? Um, all their clerk treasurers are saying it takes about a week to get reimbursed and that.
That's really quick.
Yeah.
State government, that quick?
Really quick. That's what some of them have said.
Give me a break.
I don't disagree, but some of them have said that that's what it's taking, um, you just, you have to fill out this form and you have to justify your expenses and send it back in and it's like a one-page request form. It's really kinda easy. But there is a chance that they could not reimburse you. So that's, that's the only thing. But Scott says that the heating and air is completely justifiable. I don't know, DJ, how do you feel on that?
Uh, I'd agree on that one. And you might, if, if you, depending on how much money you have there, what you might have left over, you might look at, maybe, maybe you want more than one laptop. Maybe you wanna have some type of setup so you can meet virtually if, if you have to.
Yeah, Scott mentioned perhaps, um, a monitor, like a TV. He also mentioned maybe a TV that could go in here so we can include someone in a meeting virtually and have a visual image, some things like that as well. So do you guys want me to shop it up or what?
I would like to see at least one more.
At least one more bid. Do you have a contractor preference? Bayes did not return my call.
I don't think I would use Bayes.
Someone said Latens was really good.
I was gonna say Latens. Give them a chance.
You ready to give Latens a chance? Okay.
Big or small? They did all.
Bayes, Bayes has lost every bid I've ever heard him go into, but just so high.
And I try, I think that they probably didn't call us back because they have not been successful the last couple times.
I got charged three hundred and sixty dollars if we charged my air conditioner.
Um.
They're, they're a bear.
But yeah, so there are some different things, so.
Hundred dollars a pan.
So what I'll do is I'll put together.
Trip, put it down there to my air.
I'll put together some numbers and email them to everyone and you guys can kinda weigh in back and forth and stuff like that. Um, Doug Andrews.
When's, is there an end, end?
The end of the year.
Oh, okay.
So, the end of the year is my understanding. Purchases made between March first and December thirty-first, so, yeah. All right, I'm gonna stop then.
What's that called, the court?
It's the.
Cares.
Cares?
Cares. Yeah, I've seen the cares out, I believe. I don't know, it might be state relief, I don't know. No, it's, that's federal.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
It's being run through the Indiana Finance Authority, so. I just couldn't, that number was high and I didn't know what I'd do with it and then.
Scott thought of everything.
He did. He was, he was pretty good.
Helping us, helping us.
He was pretty good to me, yeah.
Finding ways to spend money.
We've got a lot of years to do with that.
Um, I'll talk about that.
That's all the bills. Everybody's seen them. Everybody's seen the bills, right?
Well, I was gonna see if you wanna get.
Okay, whenever.
Now.
Everybody's seen them. It's just so when you're ready, we can go with them.
Okay.
Hey Natalie, real quick.
Mm-hmm.
What about tagging, uh, the air conditioning on for the police station office and stuff, onto that?
Oh, I can see. I can see where we're at, yeah.
That way we can get rid of that old small window unit we got that's rotting out the window.
Do you share a furnace?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. So Doug put that in, so I can talk to him about that too. Okay, okay.
Can they do wiring too over there? Update our?
I don't know about the wiring part.
Oh, try it.
Is that what you had your hands up about? What DJ just said?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, AIM has sent a suggested way of getting, uh, back the monies that we have not been able to collect doing, do to the governor, uh, waiving the late penalties and.
We have charged penalties the whole time.
But.
Disconnections.
And, and the disconnections. And, uh, did I, did I pass this down through there?
Probably not.
They have, uh, some jet suggestions that if a utility customer has the link on utility bills and penalties accrued during the shut-off moratorium, they may pay those back over there's different options. Three months waiving the accrued penalties, six months waiving fifty percent of the accrued penalties, or nine months waiving twenty-five percent of accrued penalties, or twelve months paying all accrued penalties. Uh, we've got, gonna have to make some kind of a plan because once these people that haven't paid get the bill, we've got to be able to have some way of handling that.
We have about, um, we have about nineteen, well, we have about, yeah, we have nineteen accounts that are, um, sixty, ninety days out. We have a couple of accounts that since this moratorium started have made zero payments.
I mean, there are people that play the system so they know what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
But we gotta be able to play the system to get the money back.
And there are some people that have made payments. They've made sporadic payments. Some people have been really good about keeping me in the loop on their situations and some people have just not. So, um, Scott has reminded me to use grace multiple times. Um, because, you know, he thought that when they last disconnected moratorium, he calls me on my cell phone at four o'clock, don't disconnect anyone tomorrow. And I was like, okay. So, um, they don't foresee this extending again, is my understanding, but I guess anything can happen. So, but the moratorium ends on Friday. And I have called people. What I've done is if I've had good contact information for people, I've called them. And I've left messages and said, hey, can you make a payment? You haven't made a payment since this date. And I've gotten a couple of people who've come and tagged me on that. A couple of people never turned, called me back. A couple of people, I'll be in Friday and never came in, so. But we do have to make a decision.
You wanted to do that tonight?
Well, the moratorium ends.
Friday.
Friday.
Okay.
So.
I can make Tony really busy on Friday.
We could have multiple, multiple shut-offs.
But we have, we have charged penalties this whole time. Some communities have not, but we never stopped charging penalties.
It's just the shut-offs that you couldn't do.
Right. I mean, there are some people on this list of bills that owe seven hundred, six hundred, five hundred dollars. I mean, there's some pretty sizable amounts on here.
I'll be reading again. About two weeks?
In two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a week after this.
You'll read on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll read on the twenty-fourth.
What do you think, people?
Mine's gonna start working.
You know what? I've really tried to make those work. I'm serious. My own Felicity can come in here and sing.
Huh?
It's on. I can see the remote.
Right, it's on, but the microphones are not on. And I tell you, in the summertime, my girls come in here and sing songs into that. And I can't get.
They have, America has, got talent and stuff in them.
They have court. They like John's gavel. They have court in here. Yeah. Lila did say that she would come up here and get it going for us if you wanted her to.
Need technician, sound technician. I kinda like the fifty percent to give them a break. I'm not as hard ass as what I was with Joe. Does everybody think I was too hard on him? Anybody think that? Thanks for the encouragement.
I.
We've been there three or four times.
I, you know, as someone that sat on that side before I became a clerk treasurer, I sat in court at least three times.
I was there three times.
Yeah. And I, you know what, and I think you missed once. I think that I went, I think Clyde and I went four times. And so it's, it's gone on long enough. It has. So.
At least we didn't mention anything about that five hundred dollar a day fine that we could have went and tried for.
Correct.
On this illegal piece of paper that we sent him.
Which was not illegal.
Well, he says it was. He's attorney, you know?
I think that Mr. Bonoma will go to the fact that it was not illegal. So you like fifty percent of penalties being waived?
I do. I don't know about the others.
What was the length of that? Was that?
Six months.
Was that the six month?
Mm-hmm.
Waiving fifty percent of the accrued penalties. I'd go with that. That sounds good to me too.
Do we need to vote on that?
Hmm, probably.
Okay, could I have a motion to, uh,
Six months.
Use a six month waiving fifty percent of accrued penalties for shut-offs?
In six months.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Yay. DB, second by CV. The move is in, second that's to use a six month repayment plan waiving fifty percent of accrued penalties for delinquent bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Think so? Motion carries. Other new business?
I'm out.
You're done?
I'm done. I, I've been making a list.
No other new business, we'll go to department reports. Water and sewer. I don't have a report.
Cause you, cause we don't have anyone shut off and we don't have any notices.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I would like, appreciate someone coming down and filling the holes in front of my house. Last year I put a new driveway in, put a four-foot edging of white rock, had it all pounded. And there's nothing but water that lays on the corner of my driveway, all the way out to the corner of the alley. It's a swamp out there tonight. And the holes are deep as my knee. So if you have someone come down there and just patch them, I'd really appreciate it. And the whoelen really needs to be patched. So if you could have someone look at it, I'd really appreciate it.
They've been working on Woods Alley. That alley also needs attention. I, I agree. Uh.
I mean, the, the patching, all of it I paid for is now starting to wash away. I had them take care of that. You know, pound it in, grate it out, and now it's washing away. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's like a swamp out there from my left tonight. There's still water laying out there tonight. So if you have somebody come look at it, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so much.
The people that'll be doing that heard that also. Okay. Now we'll go to them.
Um.
No shut-offs, I understand.
No shut-offs. Let me do, I will say this. Tony and I did talk to Matt from Midwest Meter and something to think about for the future because water is just exhausting. Um, our water software, our meter reading software is really old. I mean, I don't, did he say ten years?
No waste.
Yeah. And in the software world, that's really old, so.
Yeah, it is.
So, he said we could, you know, just, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know how much that'll cost. I have no idea at this point in time. Um, but it is food for thought for everyone, just because, um.
Can you ask him what they recommend or use?
Yeah, we can. Um.
I think she's got his card too.
I got his card right here. I put it on my stuff, so I wouldn't forget to say that tonight. Um, water utility operator did have a big gain last month. That's the best gain it's had in, I don't know. We sold a lot of water. We filled a lot of houses. We have a lot of people using water. Um.
Well, I think, uh, ShopMire must've used a lot of water. Saw a lot of those spray things go by my house.
ShopMire has used a tremendous amount of water. I don't ever remember them using it. I don't think they used that much last summer. They've used a lot. They have used a lot. Um, so it did gain last month. The increase, the ending of that bond will really, really help us move forward. And then we can really start talking about some of the well work that we need to do. Gary's been, the well right now is the one that's, that's causing the metals. It's not great, but we switched because of the pump on the other one. So this'll help us going forward, I think, a lot, so.
Now, I thought maybe somebody would be here tonight. They talk about it on Facebook, problems with water. Somebody suggested maybe we need a new well. Well, that's not gonna happen with our financial situation.
No.
So, we'll have to struggle through with what we got.
And the next one you punch may be worse.
Yeah. Yeah, you never know. The water tower sometime late this fall is going to be, uh, recoded on the inside, is what they call it?
On outside.
Painted on the outside.
Yes. The only way we can do that is we get that other well up and running, so that we have the opportunity if something happens.
Right.
Cause it's gonna run non-stop until they're done.
Right. And, uh, there's something else. Oh, I was informed by our wastewater operator, he's got two more years. We've got two years with him before he's done. So that's something we have to think about in the near future of looking for someone to, uh, handle the operation of the wastewater plant.
He's awesome out there, too.
Well, he, we really done well when we got him.
Mm-hmm, we did.
So...
We have great operators on both ends right now.
He, I don't know where he'll be able to suggest somebody or what, but it's something we need to think about in, in the near future. Okay, street department? Street guy's not here.
Well... You've been working on Woods Alley?
Alley's, we tried and did everything, but I, well, I was actually beginning with this one. Uh, worked on alleys, we did last month, too. Did some groundwork. Did some of the holes. Is what next we have left. Cut a lot of trees. From all part, or forms.
Did you, uh, talk to anyone else about that roller?
No. I, I don't even know if he's got us to, I just happened to see it.
Tony saw a small roller. Uh, somebody advertised, was it Monizuma?
Mecca.
Mecca. Uh, that would probably be really nice whenever he tries to do some patching like what they did up here by the, uh, driveway for the flea market in the post office. They had the big hole. They did a pretty nice job there, I think. It's pretty nice and smooth. If they had one of those rollers, it would've been really nice.
Is that the ones that just attached to the back of it?
No, this one's self-contained.
It was, it was only about this big.
It's something like the one that...
A little bigger than a lawn mower.
That, uh... Oh. Is it Randy Fraser? Had out there at Burt's, uh, for a while. I think where J.C. Kraft lives now. Remember that roller was sitting over there, Becky? Something like that. Which, uh, would sure be...
So that'd be good for Park Street.
It'd be good for anywhere, as far as that goes, yeah.
How much was it?
I think it was far a thousand.
I didn't think it was that much.
I don't know, I'm gonna go back and find it.
I hurt my heart.
Huh?
Said that, I think that's... MBH, um, I meet with the budget lady on Thursday, um, cause we're doing that virtually this year. And we're supposed to, our MBH spending, we're going down twenty percent at least. And what's been coming in in the last couple months is way less than twenty percent.
Well, that's cause gas tax has not been going.
Right. So, and we spent pretty much our whole MBH street repair appropriation with the grant.
And we've got rainy day, and we've got...
We do have some rainy day money. We have some other money if we really needed. We have rainy day, yeah. We do have some, um, we might have some, we have one thousand dollars in MBH new equipment.
Well, there you go.
So, yeah.
Anyhow, something like that would really be nice. My opinion is we sold the patching machine way too soon. Just because we didn't have anybody operate it. And that was quite a long time ago. We did, uh, that was before any of you people down there was on the board.
I wasn't on the board.
You weren't on the board either? It was that other board. Well, we'll move on. Uh, park?
No.
Fire department?
Okay, they've had a total of twelve runs in July. A tree fire, a mutual aid with Otter Creek. They've had seven dead runs. And other, uh, calls for, for, uh, three of them for a tree down. So they've been busy, and listen to the scanner, they've been busy in August already.
Yeah.
Um, you wanna say anything about the shrimp boil?
Went good. The auction went really good. Uh, I think we served right at two hundred people this year. So it's down a little bit, but all things being said, with everything the way it was, it went pretty well, I think. Uh, we did decide we were not going to have another one this year. Um, just the way things are and everything else going on, we're, we're gonna just wait to have one again next August. And breakfast starts, I believe, the twentieth of September. And we'll probably determine at our September meeting whether there's gonna be a dine-in or a drive-through, so stay tuned for that.
Senator?
We had two cremations and one burial.
Two cremations, one burial?
Mm-hmm.
No grave souls? Police report?
Um, I have it right here. It is six traffic stops, one assistive motorist, one domestic situation, one J-four service, which is a warrant or civil papers, one neighbor problem, one parking problem, one power line down, power outage, and three suspicious vehicles, one ticket issued, four warnings.
Okay, we have anything on properties, right?
I've had a couple complaints about a couple properties, um... I had a complaint about the property on Middle Street with all the lawn mowers in the yard. Is that what?
The fences?
Yes. What, I don't know what corner that is.
Depot and middle.
Depot and middle, yeah.
Depot and middle. Um, he's not there right now. It's actually, I think it's empty. Am I right, Tony?
Yes, he's staying with...
He's staying with family. He's really, really sick, but nonetheless, there is a lot of accumulated stuff in the... The brush that's growing up around that one is, the mo, it's getting mowed, but it is getting pretty woodsy. For lack of a better word.
You say he's, he's not there?
No, he's been having medical issues. He was a Methodist, I don't think he's back here enough.
Yeah, he's...
He's staying with family.
Very, very sick.
Last time I had, had interaction with him, I don't think he's gonna be able to take care of himself.
Okay.
Um, we can do a letter. I don't know what you wanna do with that. Um, I can get with Clyde.
Yeah, do that.
And then the other one is on, I can't remember what street. What street was the, was the ramp on? What street did you put the ramp on? Tony? What street is that?
Oak Street.
Is that, no, it's not Oak.
Depot.
Is it Depot?
Is that the, that just true?
Yes, where we just paved. It's, yes, Depot. I had a complaint about the property. No.
George's ramp?
I'm not talking about George's, but that road. Um, kinda down from George's where did they demolish houses at one point.
The Lambs?
Yes. That, you know, it's never improved. I haven't gone by there. I don't really know.
Now let's do a letter to them, too.
Okay.
It looks pretty bad.
Okay. So those are the ones.
So you ended up, did, did put a ramp in for him?
Do, Tony did.
Yeah.
He did the ramp over there.
The driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Not a ramp for the Lambs.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you're talking about.
Oh, no, I was talking about the handicap ramp we did for George's, so...
The vehicle ramp, you told me to go down, because it was like eight inches tall, uh...
He hasn't been able to complain about anything since then, has he?
He's, he's trying to make up with me. He's, he's trying to be nice to me.
I don't think it's any of him to be nice.
Hey, well, he's try, he's really trying hard.
We talked about him last meeting. You weren't here.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Well, you need to talk about him earlier meeting, I think.
Yeah.
We did, he was not very nice to me. And then when I didn't talk to him last time he brought his bill in, all I did was say thank you and walk away. He apparently didn't appreciate that. So he stayed for a minute, and I just wasn't gonna talk to him. So he came back last week and he had some complaints and some things like that. And I just said I would take note of them. And then he wanted to tit chat, and he's, he's trying to make it up to me, so whatever.
Did somebody have a little discussion with him, perhaps?
I don't think so.
I'd like to get that all the way to let us know.
I think that it's, yeah. I think he just, deep down, I think that George really actually liked me, and he just...
He doesn't like you.
He does. He does like me. So, that's all.
Okay, court treasurer report?
Okay, so I'm gonna work on our budget on Thursday with Heather. I don't have numbers. Like, this is all really confusing to do this virtually. I don't know if I've missed something. And so, I'm gonna start that. We will have our budget hearing before our September meeting. I will get you guys an email, like, budget. I'm just, I don't, when you have your meeting with her in person, she gives you all your funds, and she gives you all your numbers, and I don't have any of that. And it's not in Gateway, and Gateway's been down a whole bunch. It's been kind of a crisis year. So she and I meet virtually on Thursday afternoon, so I'll know more then, um, on what our budget's gonna be. So, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be super great. I don't think it's gonna be super terrible. So, um, there's that. I will be out all day tomorrow. I have some dental work I'm having done, so no one wants me after that, trust me. Um, and I think that's it.
Okay. Go around the crowd again. Nikki?
No.
Anything else, Barbara? Who is that, Brian?
Yeah, I just wanna make an inquiry about, uh, I'm thinking about building a, a couple new homes here in the town starting this fall. And I wanted to inquire about if any of you knew how much it cost the last time that lift station was moved, you know, to the one that's on the corner there by my barn. I didn't know if you guys could get together and see how much that might cost, uh, to move. I looked at it pretty good. I might even be willing to front some of the cost on moving that, but...
We'd have to have an engineer look at it.
Well, it's just a, there's not much to it, other than the structure. There's a little bit of a concrete foundation and the pipes. But one of the houses I wanna build is gonna be on the back of that property, and I don't want it to have a Woods Alley address. I want it to have a Vine Street address, so... And if I build one on the corner of ninety-one, Vine Street two, I also wanted to inquire about that corner. I had it surveyed probably back in two thousand twelve. And it's been about fifteen feet of the property that's been rounded off, and I'd like to see about getting that squared up.
Rounded off?
Oh, yeah.
What are you, what are you, what are you talking about?
At the corner of ninety-one, and where I've gone...
I don't know where ninety-one is, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, um, Fox Forty's house and the house.
It's empty.
The one you tore down?
I tore down both those houses.
Yeah?
That corner has been severely cut over the years. So has the one by my dad's house. It's probably lost twenty feet of corner property. And it's like the eighty-five hundred round there. There's no stop sign, so people just fly around there constantly. And I want to improve the corner and the, with curb appeal, but unless I put a stop sign or we have a stop sign there, they're correct that corner, it's not gonna get any better.
Uh-huh.
I don't know if the town is willing to work with me some on that, or, or what.
Where do you suggest we put the lift station?
Well, I would be willing to grant the town permanent easement on the back corner. Um, John, back where they were digging, I don't know what they, what were they putting back there a couple of years ago?
There's a water main leak.
Okay.
We had a water leak back there, but there used to be a lift station back there.
Back in two thousand nine, I met with Hannah and my attorney, and we went through the, all the archives up there. And Homer Woods was paid fifty dollars for permission to put sewer pipes, is what it was listed at and recorded at, up there. When Ed Barnett gave them verbal permission to put the new one on the corner, he did not own that property. And it was, you know, like I told you before, I had no interest in doing anything that's gonna cost the town any money. But there's not a person in this town would want that stinking lift station sitting on their property like that. And since I own all the surrounding properties, I've been willing to make an improvement. I was hoping the town may work with me some on that.
Well, like I said, the only thing we could do is get an engineering estimate on that. How long you been thinking about doing this?
Well, I brought it up in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
I know you've been complaining about the lift station for a long time.
Right.
But how long you been planning on doing?
Totally full, I had my electric put in the ground. And the utility meter is sitting on a temporary pole, and I even had an engineer from Duke that warned me about it several times, thinking it was mine, because I've had to stand the thing up numerous times, cause it ended up leaning down in a storm. And I wanted to have you guys see about putting the power under the ground for that, which would've cost next to nothing. And that was, I've complained about that at least four or five times.
Let us look into it.
That's all I ask, you know, I just, I want to build a couple houses here, but like I said, I don't want, you know, nobody wants to have an alley address, especially as a new home dealer, aren't gonna be cheap homes. I'm talking a hundred fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar homes.
Okay, Tony? Kevin, last? Clyde?
I don't know.
Okay. Chair would accept the motion to pay the bills as presented?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to pay the bills as presented, anything on a question? Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Uh, next month, six thirty?
Yes.
For budget meeting?
Budget meeting will be at six thirty, yes.
Seven for the regular meeting. Chair accept the motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I don't get it different that time. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn? Anything on a question? Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Most same sign? Motion carried.
We need someone to sign minutes for me. John wasn't here.
Adjourn.